All right, it's six oh one on Tuesday, the sixth twenty twenty five, and we are going to start off our hearings within ordinance, our ordinance hearings. And I guess the order we're going to do them is this changes to the solar and the self shellfish and then the Board of Appeals. So whoever wants to go first.
Lisa Sabatino will be speaking to the changes on solar. I will be speaking to the other two.
Okay. Lisa, you wanna?
Yes.
Let us know what's going on.
Yes, I'm Lisa Sabatino on the planning board. Uh, just a minor change to the solar panel, solar ordinance. In the past, all buildings were supposed to have a path along the ridge of the building as well as the sides to allow for fire protection and um access to the roof should there be a fire on the structure. It was brought to our attention that there wasn't anything in the ordinance that addressed non-habitable structures. So we are adding a section that says detached, non-habitable structures, including but not limited to carports, garages, solar trestles, sheds and similar structures shall not be required to provide roof access. The thinking that we're not concerned about anybody inside of those structures being harmed by a potential fire. So that piece seemed burdensome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Uh, any comments or anything on that?
Any questions or comments about the proposed changes to the solar ordinance?
My only question, my only question would be if a carport is usually attached to a house. Yes, no, I, I'm just wondering if there's uh, you know, any issue there in terms of habitation? And is this consistent with other community, uh, community ordinances on solar?
Yeah.
Is it common practice?
And I think a carport typically, I think, is also not as high a structure as a house might be. Um, so I think it poses less of a concern for firefighters being on top of a a structure such as a carport. I do think that they are at times attached. I don't know if that necessarily, if they are all attached. Do you know, Mike?
I don't, um, but I think your point is well taken, the height of it, but also you know, the planning board in Georgetown uh requires a, a, a letter from an engineer to say that the roof piece could take the weight of a solar system, I mean, a solar array, and I'm not sure if a carport would, would be able to.
Usually carports aren't fully enclosed anyway, so you'd have that access, yeah, underneath and around there, so.
And probably unless the car itself is burning, less potential for fire. No kitchen. Okay, that was my only.
Yes.
That's the one asking.
Were there any other comments, thoughts? I did see the fire chief pop on, so I wasn't sure if he had any comments he wanted to share. If not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Brian.
No, that's all right, Tyler. Um, yeah, like the, well, the revision here, um, specifically says detached and non-habitable structures. So for firefighting, uh, uh, reasons, that's a, a good, not a bad thing to have when it's an occupied structure, but these would be detached, non-habitable structures according to the new ordinance changes, so that wouldn't uh really change how we do things and uh like it was said, this is a much lower risk on those structures, um, so it would be less likely to uh need to have roof access.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other comments on the proposed ordinance change for the solar energy ordinance? If not, I will jump into the shellfish conservation ordinance. Thank you so much, Lisa.
Sure.
Uh, I would just flag that the shellfish committee met a couple of times over the course of the last few months in working on their ordinance. The big changes really were changing defer definitions surrounding the free or complimentary licenses that the town gives out, and those changes came directly from the state wanting to expand what it meant being a senior citizen and so on. The other big change to the shellfish ordinance this year is that the town does allow uh some spots in town like Sagittahawk Bay Camp, Sagittahawk Bay Campground are agents of the town and so far that they can sell the shellfish licenses when we're not open at the campground. And historically, there's been a fee of one dollar that they would be able to retain, however, most of the payments down at the campground are done by card these days, and the card processing fee supersedes that agent fee. So to do that favor for the town, they really end up losing out on money. So the shellfish committee decided to raise the agent fee from one dollar to five dollars. And so those really were the substantive changes in the shellfish conservation ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but really the definitions come from the state, and they are asking they, for us to have a line in there this year as well to make sure that we annually check, or the committee rather, checks the shellfish management plan to keep it under review and at the forefront. Any questions, thoughts, concerns?
I just have one, one thing to say about that. So you're talking about the seven day licenses, yes, right, that Sagittahawk Bay Campground sells for us?
Yes.
Right. Does that five dollar agent fee apply when they purchase it here? Or does that only apply if they're purchasing it Sag Bay?
The way the ordinance change was is it, all agent fee goes to five dollars. It wasn't just Sag Bay.
Okay, I was just curious. I just wanted in my mind to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns? If not, we will keep this moving. And the last ordinance tonight that has a proposed revision is the Board of Appeals ordinance. And the lone change actually comes on page four, and it is changing a reference instead of saying Article seven B, it changes it to subsection B, which makes it a little more intuitive for the folks to be able to find where things are in here. So really, it was more changing the style of how to find things, not a substantive change by any means.
Is that a subsection of our ordinance or a state statute?
Uh, subsection of our ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
It's really just to clarify.
Yes, and it was a good eagle eye catch by the Board of Appeals to improve. With that, I will end that presentation and you can declare that hearing closed.
Hey, I guess I will declare the ordinance hearing closed. And now we will go on to the public hearing on the easement on the Blueberry Hill Road or whatever it is.
Perfect. So we'll start with Mike. I have a couple of notes to share as well, and then it opens up for comments.
All right, thank you. Um, so there's a place uh that's located at floor, uh, four, Blueberry Hill Road. It's owned by Melissa Patterson, and it does not currently have a subsurface wastewater disposal system, otherwise known as a septic system. Um, it would be required to have one if the uh building was to become a principal or residential dwelling. Uh, and Blueberry Hill Road is a private road that is owned by Michael McManahan. Uh, according to the licensed site evaluator, and those are the folks that design septic systems, this, the site immediate on four Blueberry Hill uh Road is too small and cannot support a subsurface uh septic system, and it cannot, it cannot also support a holding tank uh system. So having said that, a new septic design was developed on town-owned property, which is located uh on the opposite side of Blueberry Hill Road. Since this is a private road and the septic is proposed to be on town-owned property, it was determined that easements from the owner of Blueberry Hill Road and the town of Georgetown was needed, and those documents have, uh, have been drafted. And also for the easement on two town property, and believe why we're here tonight, is that it does require uh town approval at a town meeting. That's a quick nutshell of it.
Thank you, Mike. And I would flag for everyone online on the town website, GeorgetownME.com. If you click on the town meeting information tab, you can find a bunch of related documents, the proposed easements, and a map that kind of lays out where the proposed septic system would be. And I would just note with this, there is possibly one error in the proposed easement deed that's been posted to the website, given that this is a new septic system. The town is aware of this and will work with the property owner to amend said document should the select board move this forward to town meeting consideration. But we did not want to ask folks to continually keep changing documents and incur fees until it was determined whether or not that would be going to town meeting. And I did just want to raise that earlier this morning, a member of the Conservation Commission inquired whether this parcel of land fell under the same restrictions as the Ipkar Preserve, which is forever recreation and conservation. I'd say that this concern did come from the fact that the parcel in question was purchased in the same purchase from Maude Stussy that bought the Ipkar Preserve land, a purchase that was partially funded with federal Open Space Act grant monies. This grant, the, had restrictions on what the land could and could not be used for, and any violation of those restrictions could lead to the town having to pay back the original amount of almost thirty thousand dollars. What I will say, however, today, the code enforcement officer, myself, reviewed the original application, and it's our contention based on the maps that were associated that this portion of the purchase did not fall under those restrictions, for it wasn't on the open space mapping. That said, we will be connecting with Maine Municipal Legal and possibly the federal government. There's a contact in Bangor just to make sure we've crossed Ts and dotted Is on that parcel of land. But it's our contention based on the evidence we have today that it does not fall into those possible restrictions on that parcel.
Tyler, can you tell us, um, when you think you'll have a definitive answer on that? Because it obviously makes a difference.
Uh, I am hoping to have a definitive answer on that by our next select board meeting. I don't know how quickly the federal government will be getting back to me, though with a state branch of HUD, I think it'll be a little bit easier. There's also a state program that I think I might be able to get the answer to quicker. But by time MMA got back to us, state and federal offices were closed for the day. But again, in reviewing with Mike, it was very clear there were different designations and shadings of that map for just what that's worth. And we see you there, Bill, with a comment, so.
All right, so just, just, uh, so you feel what, like eighty-five percent sure of your contention?
I would say that I'm two-thirds of the way there, but I've learned that I am always able to be surprised, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Tyler. Just a, a, a question, and I'm a Johnny come lately to this, so I, I may not have all the information. Um, for someone to have, uh, the use of town property, uh, will there be a, a, a fee, uh, annual rental charge or something that they would be paying the town because it obviously is of some value to them in order to be able to put such a system in? Thank you.
That, that has not been a part of the discussions as of now, but I will definitely make a note of that comment. And I would note just for everyone here, just to reiterate, this is something because it is town land, does ultimately have to, if the select board decides to add this to the town warrant, that is just one step in the process. Ultimately, the voters of Georgetown at town meeting would decide whether or not to grant said easement. Lisa.
Can we have a situation like this anywhere else in town where some, where a private individual uses town land for their own personal purposes?
There is a, an easement that is on that same lot for a septic system near the Ball Field Way.
I don't even remember how long ago that was.
Two, there's two of them.
Yes. And what I will say is that those Conservation Commission concerns about that parcel weren't raised at the time. And so for what that's worth, we are still going to do our due diligence and just confirming that there aren't any strings attached from that federal money on that parcel, but there is precedent in history in town for doing so.
Bronwyn?
I just want to point out that the history on the most recent, um, the ball field, uh, in, uh, in, incident that relates, um, there are some problems with the way that that was done. It was before I was on the Board of Selectmen, and, but it, it influenced the way that we originally um, talked about this proposal. Because the select board, it did not go to town meeting. And it was after Tyler investigated, um, the procedures with MMA that we learned that it should have gone to town meeting. It was approved, in other words, by the select board. It was fairly recent um, because I recall, um, Mark Donovan observing to me that somebody had put their septic system over onto some of the land that is the parking lot in front of the tennis court when we were both on the TOP MB. Um, in other words, it was maybe I've been on the select board about five years, so it was perhaps six or seven years ago that this occurred. Hmm, and I do think we need to follow up on the whole system that was in place at the time. One difference in that situation in this one is that the land was adjacent to the property in question. Um, this situation involves digging up the road to, to put pipes underneath it to the available town land. I'd also note that, that the solution to the Peterson's problem was initially, um, suggested by former code enforcement officer, Chris Wilcoxen, who was searching for a possible solution to their problem. Um, and a lot of new information has been discovered since then about what's involved. Uh, so I'm not speaking for or against, just trying to add some context to the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Bronwyn.
Yeah, thanks, Bronwyn.
May I ask a couple of questions? Hi, um, Kelly James here. I listened in on the initial select board discussion on this, and since then, I've looked at the septic plan and other things. I'm curious, has TOP MB met and discussed even putting that parcel of land on the market if it's because there's five houses around there, and we're gonna make one person asking for this, but I know that it's such a small area.
Mm-hmm.
When septic's fail, I mean, all these are on little tiny lots. I worry about what happens for the next house that's sitting next door to it. And like precedent, like, so what if the town just put the piece of land on the market? And then it's not town-owned land that we're dealing with.
Uh, as I understand, it's a lot, well, I know that the TOP MB does not govern that land.
Okay.
Um, I do believe it's conservation. Everybody, that's conservation land.
Uh, who's talking right now, please?
Oh, sorry.
That was Mark Donovan. If, if you could stand, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Pick you up.
Well, I don't say maybe, but you can keep doing it.
It's hiding you behind my, behind Mike. It, it's zooming in on you.
There you are.
Hey, Mark, thank you.
Well, I, I mean, I, I do believe I've been out there thirty years, and I, I believe that's conservation land, right? A conservation committee governs that land.
The, the Conservation Commission definitely governs the Ipkar Preserve. This land is kind, I don't want to say it's no man's land, but it, it's town land, but it's not actively under the TOP MB or the Conservation Commission as we see it right now. And that's part of the reason we were diving into old applications today on kind of jurisdiction on this. But to answer your question, Kelly, to my knowledge, at least since I've been here, there has not been a discussion about selling any of those parcels.
Well, then you would kind of take out the whole town-owned land part of this issue.
Well, at, at one point, um, it was a while ago, and I'm not sure, I may not have my facts exact right. One of those pieces was up for sale, and I think the um, it was either, uh, offered or, uh, suggestion that if the people on the road could get together, um, it would have been possible to design a system that would have taken care of all of them. I don't know, is it, is that, do you remember that happening, Mike, or not?
There was talk of it when Fred Hayes bought Joe McCarthy's house, which didn't have a septic system at the time.
Right.
Uh, I think that land's since been purchased by you people, right?
Yes, the one down at the bottom.
Yes, the old hotel lot.
Okay, cuz.
That hotel lot, yes, two, two, one twenty-seven is privately owned now by.
But, I mean, was that, wasn't that?
There was, there was no, uh, loose discussion on, hey, there's a bunch of other people. That's one of the questions I have for everybody tonight. If if it's okay for four, Blueberry Hill, is it okay for seven, nine, eleven, thirteen, and seventeen who all have holding tanks, or there's still two up there with no?
Mm-hmm. It's opening up a can of worms.
I was just curious, if this is available to everybody? Um, and then, and then I, I looked up the definition of conservation land, and, uh, and this is the, the exact opposite of, of conservation usage.
John, can John or Tyler, can you just tell us who that was speaking, please? I couldn't tell. That is, oh, it's still Mark. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Mike, would you mind jumping? I think if we move this, it'll zoom in on folks, cuz
No, it'll be.
This should work a little better now, Aria.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to know, is it neighbors or is it TOP MB speaking? So that's helpful, like, that's Mark, and then if there's gonna be neighbors later on, I just want to be able to keep that straight.
Mark is also a neighbor.
Of course, yes, he's both.
Tyler, could I suggest that we ask anyone who speaks first to identify themselves and to stand? And that way, it's, it's more clear to everybody who's speaking, and, um, I appreciate Mark's, I don't know if Mark's finished, but he, he was in the middle of, so.
Oh, yeah, for now, I guess, oh, yeah. Just questions, I'm just curious.
Any other questions or comments?
My name is Ray Boivier, and I'm a neighbor. I own seven Blueberry Hill, and we own part of the land that's down the hill that seems to be all, seems to be all town lands. I have a series of questions here. I asked, I beg your, your pardon, because I, I'd hoped to have a handout. But just today, my computer and, and printer stopped talking to each other. I wish my grandchildren had been in the, in the hood, they would have helped. I have six, six fact questions, which I hope will help make the deliberation more intelligent. So question number one begins with the, uh, begins with a statement, the easement deed. I'm reading these off my phone now because I couldn't, couldn't print up anything. The easement deed mentions that the grantor town is the owner of two certain parcels of land. No mention i- is made of land privately owned by my brother and me. But since this land was disappeared here, since this land borders the area of the proposed septic system, it needs to be taken into account. So the question is, will there be a written guarantee that the septic tank and the leach field are the mandated distance from the private property, from our, our private property? That's question number one.
Do you like to personalize the answer?
No.
I don't. Is there anybody here that can answer that question at this point?
I guess this would have to meet all the setbacks, that's to get, to get the thing.
I, I had the property surveyed. I had Mark's sense you do it. You went by the survey?
Yes.
And, um, the setbacks.
Wait, I'm sorry, but let's talk directly to the people running the hearing, not to each other. It's way too confusing. We don't know who's talking to them.
So, so Missy, if you could state your name and then answer that question kind of towards us.
No, we, I had the Mark sense he come down. He did, uh, in the actual thing given to the town, it shows all the setbacks, uh, within the state laws. It was all done last year. And, um, it's not on your property. Your property was here.
It has to be ten feet.
If we can, again, folks, if we can keep direct.
It's, okay, well, you could tell, I mean, you have the, I mean, I had the paper with, worked with him too, but it has a setback. It has to be so far for everybody's well, and maybe a setback. It was all done by the state. It was sent into the state. It was, everything was fine. Once, I got all that done, and then I had to get permission from Mike McManahan, which he'd here with me tonight, to go across Blueberry Hill to put it, and it's not where anybody's gonna see it. I did take pictures, but where I just found out about this today, I didn't have a chance to print them off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but for the people that live on Blueberry Hill, the little grass section across from Blueberry Hill where I mow, that is not where it's going. It's going down below that. You will not even see it.
Okay. Thanks.
I, I just would point out that we don't need to answer all these, any questions. We need to hear the questions. And since this session is being recorded, it's, it will certainly be possible to retrieve all of the questions.
Okay.
I, I'd like to hear Mr. Boivier's other questions.
Okay, question number two is what will be the diameter of the pipe coming from Blueberry Hill, from four, four Blueberry Hill? And will the pipe be buried or visible?
Don't, we're not answering, just ask.
Just, okay. Thank you. Question three, during construction of the subsurface wastewater system, will any work disrupt traffic on Blueberry Hill Road? And if so, for how long? Question four, during construction of the subsurface wastewater system, will there be any work that impacts the driveway at seven Blueberry Hill? Question five, the easement deed says that the grantee needs to replace the existing subsurface wastewater disposal system. That language can be misleading, especially the word replace. The letter from Georgetown that invited us here to this session says, says specifically that four Blueberry Hill does not have a subsurface wastewater disposal system, which means that replace, replace is used ambiguously and vaguely.
Thank you.
And this question number six, the proposal mentions town lands, but there could be some ambiguity about who is responsible for the upkeep and pumping of of a system. A septic system has to be cared for. Will there be a mandatory schedule for a maintenance and pumping of the system? And will it be clear who is responsible for the maintenance and pumping of that system? And those are the six questions, six factual questions that I hope are, will be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Yes, and and would you please, uh, I'd appreciate it, and I'm sure all of us on the select board would appreciate, uh, Mr. Boivier, if you could, um, forward your questions to Tyler so that we can have those, um, um, distilled and ready to, um, consider. So thank you and Ms. Peterson both.
Um, okay.
Okay. I'm Jane Boivier, the wife of Ray Boivier, so, um, I am worried about the timing of the installation. Uh, it's probably gonna take place in the summertime, which is, of course, when our families all gather at seven Blueberry Hill. And, uh, you know, I'm worried about the noise. I'm worried about the, this, the, uh, road being torn up. And, uh, I, yeah, I think it would be inconvenient for us, to say the least, with the, the timing of it.
Thank you, Ms. Boivier. And we see your hand, Bill. Before we go to any repeats, we just want to see if anyone else in the room had thoughts to offer. I see Dale Savoy.
Yep. We supposed, Dale Savoy, um, we supposed to answer his question, cuz I do have the answer.
You're all given two minutes to offer any thoughts, and that might be very constructive.
The two-inch pump line goes across the road. The field will be put in access off the main road, not Blueberry Hill, with a temporary culvert and backing in there and put the system in. The only disturbance to the road would be cutting across it, plus two-inch line, uh, which would be like John, now I know John and Charlie didn't work up there.
Yep.
Is maybe some ledge hammering at some point, but, you know, people will still be able to get in and out for the most part, you know, so. But then actually, and as far as the maintenance of the system, this septic system is really pumping the tank every three or four years. It's probably gonna be more seasonal than anything, so there's really not a lot of maintenance that has to be done to it, so. It's probably gonna be more seasonal than anything, so there's really not a lot of maintenance that has to be done to it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy. Were there any other thoughts from folks who haven't spoken yet? If not, I see Bill Webster's hand up.
Uh uh thank you, Tyler. Uh just a another couple of uh quick questions. Would or should the town consider selling that land if it doesn't have any other purpose for the town? Which might make some things easier, perhaps. Uh so if the town is to retain it, uh then the question is, is there any diminu- uh any reduction in the value of that land for the town? And if there is, then that seems to me that the town's people should be competent for that loss. Um so I just raised tho- those two questions.
Thank you, Bill.
Anything else?
I'd like to ask, um if no one else has a comment, when when everybody else has spoken, I'd like to ask Mark to go back to what his discussion about allowing access for other residents of Blueberry Hill. Um as to whether he believes there is interest. I know he's a landowner up there himself and has a holding tank. Uh that this is a question that has concerned me throughout the discussion. If we make this opportunity available to one landowner, should we be expand extending that opportunity to all the landowners who aren't in a similar situation, because they all do have some means of disposing of wastewater? Whereas this particular lot apparently does not and and never has had. So I just would like to have Mark expand on the interest level of neighbors.
You want Mark, and you want Missy to go first?
I I I know Missy had some thoughts, and I know Mark can expand on that too.
Well, the the Boiviers, when the property in front of their yellow place on Blueberry going down to the road, they bought that. So their property goes all the way straight down. Mine, where I would like the um septic, is so far from their property line where they've designed it to put it. And that goes right as straight across. So for Mark, or anybody on the other side of Boiviers, they would have to get an easement for them to go across their property to do this. Where I'm on the total other side of the and not only that, in Georgetown, there's a rule that you can't build anything if you don't have two acres. So the town can't sell the land because it's unviable. Who's gonna buy it?
Okay.
Mark, did you want to respond to Bronwyn's query about interest on the hill?
Uh sure, I think that there would probably be interest on the hill because just uh going up the hill, the first guy just got one, a septic system that is, Ford doesn't have one. The next one up shares one with another house. Uh on the right-hand side, holding tank.
Holding tank.
Barney has nothing. I have a holding tank. Donna Maroon has a holding tank. Maloney, whose house is for sale now, and you'll be seeing paperwork on, has nothing. And then Frank, at the very end, has one. So I'd say there's probably four to six possibly people that would be interested in improving the value of their home and not having, doing away with my monthly pumping, so whatever. Uh when we, uh I think in right around nineteen eighty-five, the house that my sister owns next door and the one that we own now had wells and holding tanks, and right about the same time, Donna and Irene, we all did it kind of at the same time. But we didn't have enough land to have a septic system. In those days, apparently, things have changed, because you can get them in a, in a room this big now. Uh and most of those houses came to the twenty-first century, sort of, and some didn't. And that that's kind of where it's at.
I know, um if you don't mind, I know that the the state makes a differentiation between houses that have holding tanks and houses that don't have anything to begin with. For the one, um McCarty's old house, I know for, I know that one, that one had a holding tank, and that put it in a different um schedule or whatever of ability to have things. And that's how they were able to actually get that system. Since he had a holding tank, they were able to to design a system to replace the holding tank and make that area usable. So sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but that's, you can't just get a new system on a little tiny place. They're trying to get rid of as many of the holding tanks, and that was the the process behind that one. Um being able to be put where it was, you know, such a small spot, but that that would explain if that helps at all and and the thought process on any of that.
The holding tank not able to be put in a basement?
It's more of a codes. Surprise me.
I would be surprised. Yeah. I don't think it's allowed.
I used to be recording, hello friend of Missy's. She's been working on this project for over three years. And it's just constant changes and and I'm wondering, in order to get the septic system in, if the rest of the neighborhood on the other side of the street was to put in a bigger tank, it would probably still have to go down the hill further. And I'm wondering, you know, because you would want to have to cross down and in. So I'm wondering, would it, would that be allowed to separate tanks, even if the town sold to the neighborhood or whatever?
It it's a question I don't have the answer for right now, so.
I know that Missy had a great point in saying, if well, is these people won't want anybody crossing the, across their property to put something in, it's not gonna happen anyway. So all these people in the end that want a septic system aren't gonna build across their land to pump into the tank to get into the field.
I would, I would encourage folks to to peruse the map that is posted on the website. I will say that there is some gaps between lots. This is a very lot. Uh thirteen U thirty-three, which is this lot, is not quite a salamander, but it's pretty close in its shape where it snakes up and around. So there could be some creative ways of thinking, because there isn't exactly a complete block in between, because the Boiviers bought the old hotel lot, which actually is a little bit of a gap between the back of their lot. So there is some space in that area potentially. Just to clarify for that, Ms. Nomar.
Yes. Could I, I just wanna say, adding to what these folks have said, there, Bronwyn's question is two questions. One, can, is, is, is the land feasible for a large septic system? There's a lot of ledge around here.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, because when I had Mark sense he came, I mean, I thought even closer up to Blueberry Hill.
That would be better for you.
Well, it was grass and everything, but when they come with their special tool, the only place they could find, and it's for a small system, and they have it marked out. And then, I mean, if you wanna look, I mean, I, if I had more time, I would have take, I took some pictures today of where it's going. But I have time to print out for everybody to see. I can for the next meeting, uh but it's not even half this room narrower, uh you know, and it's just, I mean, and he had, he'd go on around, and I mean, everything else is ledge there. And that's the only feasible place he could find to do it.
Yeah, the only thing I would insist on is that there are two questions. One, whether there's land available for us, a large septic system that could handle more than, and Mike is
I don't think it's, uh, it's not large enough. That piece is not large enough, but.
I I would just remind folks, I would remind folks again, and I don't mean to cut folks off. The way the process is, we gotta speak up this way and not get into a back and forth. Some hearings get a lot more contentious than this one, so we just stay consistent, and I appreciate your indulgence.
Anything else?
Any thoughts from folks on Zoom? In the room? If not.
I really appreciate the information that's been offered and the questions that have been raised. And I I'm sure that the select board will consider all of the thoughts that were presented tonight. We also appreciate the, the fact that the Peter's have um had a lot of change to contest with, as we discovered. Both the process that we had to follow and the limitations of the property. There's a lot of old deed work involved here.
And we know we're waiting for a little bit from you, so with any luck, we'll be able to um have more to go by possibly on our meeting.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, which is next week, a week from today. So with that being said, I guess I will um close this public hearing on the easement. And we will
And now you can move on to our Special Select Board Meeting.
Special Select Board Meeting. Thank you, guys. Um and now that it's six forty-two, I will call to order our special select board meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, you know, we've got public comment and then all business and
Get back in there. So is there any public comment on the special meeting? Let's see any good, so um.
All right, and so the only item that we scheduled for tonight's select board meeting were further deliberations on the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty-six town budget. And I would just advise the board that by time we're done with these deliberations, I would be hopeful that the board has a motion to send this budget on to public hearing. So I just wanted to flag that for the discussion, and I'm gonna back right off.
Okay. Yeah, so um pretty much, we're here to um to discuss and make any adjustments to the budget. Um as you know, we have budget hearing next week. Um and we're, you know, we just need to finalize a couple of items. Um and make sure that you folks are are um okay with sending it on to public hearing. Okay, well, I have an adjustment on the Board of Appeals budget. I've talked with Rufus Brown about that, if we can turn to that, unless somebody else wants to hit one of the um tasks before the the Board of Appeals budget.
And would it, would it make, would it make sense for me to screen share so everybody can see that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Tyler.
Yes, of course, because otherwise, I'm looking at the budget on my screen and not you guys.
Let's see, where is share? Oh, share's right there, share screen. Right here. Thank you for your patience, folks. And what page is that, Mary?
Ten.
Page ten.
And you might wanna make that a little bit bigger when you can, Tyler, please.
Yes, we will, and I'm gonna move the TV and grab the keyboards so I can zoom in, so.
There it is. There you go.
This one fast.
Yeah, that's
Keyboard, Bronwyn, to zoom it on in. It's a two-parter. I have to hit the control key.
That's great. Oh, it went down again, but it was up, Tyler. Maybe hit it one more time, please? There.
Can we see?
That's perfect. Yeah, that's great. Okay, the line that says tapes transcr- transcribing minutes, that's actually um that's a mischaracterization, so it's not uh it's not a transcribing minutes. That should be hearing, I think that should be categorized, and we talked about it that at the uh BOA meeting, and I've confirmed it with Rufus today, that that really ought to be hearing expenses. So that should have, that's how it should be coded in QuickBooks and on this ledger line. Um but in any event, six fifty is far too much um based on the new technology available. So when we have a Board of Appeals hearing, um we can record that on Zoom, and if somebody then needs a transcript, um they'll have the, they'll have the option. So long, uh Tyler, I just, uh Rufus and I discussed this. We need to ensure that if the Board of Appeals has a hearing that lasts, let's call it, you know, a day and a half, Tyler, you have um the cloud storage through the upgraded Zoom account to accommodate that. Is that correct? And if not, then I'd like you to please do that, because it will be far less than this amount of six fifty.
We definitely have expanded the cloud, and we've got plenty of storage. So don't tell the planning board that too loud, because their meetings run pretty long.
Yeah, so you know, in three or four years now, uh let's call it four years or so, we've only had one hearing. And I think it was about a day and a half. Um and we did not have, you know, I don't think that was on Zoom, but it would be, you know, it's a there's no requirement that that involve a court reporter, which does cost more. Um but uh there's no, there's, there's no reason to have that amount at six fifty. And Rufus and I believe that that is better, um that that is a, the, the more accurate amount is probably two fifty, and even that, you know, might be overage, but at least it gives us uh some leeway, should there be um some extraordinary expenses coming out of a hearing, like witness, you know, um there may be witness fees, mileage, that kind of things.
Is that a motion, Aria? Uh I I think Bronwyn just said so moved.
Yes. So exactly what is, what is the motion? Is the motion to change this number from two hundred and fifty, uh from six hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty? Yes, I have a, I have a dual motion here, Mary. My motion is to recharacterize this line as hearing expenses, because as it's currently here uh characterized, it's incorrect. So that should be hearing expenses in the QuickBook, uh no, ledger item. And then my, uh the second part of my motion is that it be reduced to two fifty.
I'm happy to, Aria, but I I, my question is, is Zoom, is a Zoom recording then acceptable as a legal record of the meeting?
Yes, there's nothing that prohibits a Zoom recording from being a leg- a legal record. You know, it's an audio recording. It will be retained by the municipality. And, you know, actually, audio recordings in some respect um can deliver information and data that uh a dry transcript cannot. So.
I just wanted to make sure that it is
Yes.
Acceptable.
Yes. Okay. Excuse me, Bronwyn, when you, when you say acceptable, do you mean acceptable in a court of law?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Okay, is that correct, Aria? Is acceptable for you to to tell the, you know, the the superior court that they need to listen to a Zoom thing? Well, it can be tr- transcribed thereafter. It can be, we can send that to a court reporter, and they can transcribe that. So that's why I wanted to make sure it was retained. But there's, as far as Rufus and I know, there's no explicit prohibit, prohibition against an audio recording. And in other words, in court matters, you know, in a regular trial, you have an audio recording. Yeah. And you have a court reporter there. So what litigants often do is they will order the audio recording, which is fifty dollars versus a transcript, which might be four hundred and fifty dollars. So as long as there is a record, we will be okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Then I would have no objection to that.
Oh, so it's been, it's been moved, so all in favor?
And can we just say out loud, so I can, okay, I see both of you on there. That is three to oh. Perfect. Was there another budget that we were looking for revisions?
Which ones? I I don't remember.
Is the um fire chief still with us?
He is on the call. I see him, yes.
Um, cause I would like to just have him Talk about the fire department budget, um specifically in reference to reserve amounts. Yeah, can you make it bigger?
Yep, we're getting there. Can you see it now?
Yes, yes.
And can you see that, Brian? Up one.
On one page.
Yes.
Oh, she wanted reserve funds, which is right here.
No, it's right here.
Oh, I see, yeah.
But the point, my point is more about.
Yeah.
Um, capital equipment reserve fund and emergency vehicle reserve fund. Um, we're making a sixty thousand dollar contribution to the emergency, to the. Emergency Vehicle Reserve Fund. Um, is, do we have a number in mind that we're trying to achieve? Uh, you know, the Solid Waste Committee. Is trying to build their reserve fund up to the point where they could purchase a new compactor. Are we looking at a number for a new ambulance, or what what is the, you know? What is the uh goal, ultimate goal of uh increasing the reserves? By such a significant amount in a single year?
Uh, the goal right now is to use the reserve fund to offset uh funds would have to be bonded. Um, as of right now, uh, the rate we are accruing funds in the reserve fund is not going to have sufficient funds. At the time where we're gonna need a new vehicle. So at this point in time, uh, from. This decisions in the last few years and probably even before that, um, it's been that. The, we'll use the emergency reserve fund or vehicle fund, sorry, um, to pay part of expenses, but um. The remainder will usually be bonded or hasn't bonded in the past. And as of right now, at the rate we're accruing, um. We'll still have to bond a portion of it, but um it will be, uh, my goal is to just.
You mean borrow?
Yes, borrow, excuse me. Um, yeah, so the, in the near future, when we're going to need a new vehicle. Um, the balance of the fund will be insufficient at current rates to cover the full expense. Um, so it's, so the goal I've got right now is just to reduce about the we'll have to borrow in the future.
What is the estimated expense, total expense?
It's highly dependent on what we're looking for. If we're looking for a brand-new ambulance, uh, right now, those prices are about three hundred and eighty to four hundred thousand dollars for a brand-new ambulance. Um, a brand-new fire truck right now to replace the one that is our oldest. Um, I estimate, and this is a lot of guessing because prices have been so wildly fluctuating last few years. Would be somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, those are for brand-new vehicles. Um, we choose to go to reuse route, there will be less, but there are so many variables. That go along with buying a used vehicle like this. Um, I can't provide you an estimate right now because there's just too many possibilities.
Okay, so could we go down to the totals in the reserve funds again? So. Right now, we have two hundred thousand in the emergency vehicle reserve fund. And for what you're saying, that's not just for an ambulance, that fund would be used for a fire engine. Whichever vehicle was the first one to go. So.
Yep.
What is? What is the total that you're looking to build up? In that fund?
I don't have a specific number in mind right now. Um, if we were to, it it depends on what the Select Board chooses to do. Moving forward, if they would like to, if the town like to continue to accrue funds at the rate that we historically have been. Then we will have less in that fund to offset uh the price, uh, the cost when it comes up. And if we accrue more on the fund now, then we will have more money to offset the price, the cost in the future. So. Um, it's really up to the town and the Select Board. I um, I'm of the belief personally, just me, that um. You know, it's better to save up for things you can afford when you're gonna put them and try to borrow less. Uh, wind up spending less money in the, in the long term that way, I believe, but um, again, that choice is not necessarily mine. So we'll uh leave that up to you guys.
And the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund was recently established, correct?
Correct.
So there again, do you have a goal in mind for what you wanna build it up to?
Uh, yeah, so as of right now, um, in the next, I'd say about hmm, every six years. Um, I've got a running list of equipment that uh will need to be replaced uh or updated in the next couple of years. And uh, or just things that will be uh, you know, worn out or whatnot. And uh, right now, I think that total cost is close to two hundred thousand dollars. Um, for that list as of right now, um, and as time goes on, new things will be added to the list, and as we need to purchase certain things, some will be taken off that list.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted, wanted to clarify for everybody, right now, the Emergency Vehicle Reserve Fund has almost a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in it. And the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund has ten thousand dollars in it. Okay, so that what you, what you just quoted, Bron, and I just wanted to be sure we understood. Was the two twenty-seven will be after we put the sixty in. If we put the sixty in, that's what the balance will be. Okay, the same thing with the thirty thousand. If we put that twenty in, then the balance will be thirty thousand next June. Not, you know, not two months from now.
Which is what I was wondering if we had, you know, if we put sixty thousand into the vehicle fund. Are we looking, are we trying to put in sixty thousand every year, or is this, is, is, are we looking at? Trying to get up to five hundred thousand or three hundred thousand?
Right.
In that account.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, we put, we put forty thousand in it in twenty-three, twenty-four, fifty last year, request for sixty this year. Yeah.
What is the oldest vehicle, and do you expect that one to to be the first one to be replaced? Did you have something that gets used more often? That might end up wearing out um before, say, your oldest piece? I'm just curious how that, how that, the fleet is looking in that sense.
Right, so uh, to answer the question, our oldest vehicle right now is nineteen ninety-eight. That's our primary fire response uh engine. The nineteen ninety-eight chassis, um, that's the oldest vehicle. Um, however, I do. Think that we'll end up needing to replace one of the ambulances before that one. Um, there, I have, we have a two thousand eight and a two thousand six. Uh, ambulance, um, they're both, don't have a ton of miles, but they've, they're getting worn. Um, I quoted that. We've put. A fair amount of maintenance into the last few years. Um, and unfortunately, the the things that are breaking on them more recently. A little bit more expensive than in the, in the past, so I suspect we'll probably need new ambulance first, um, mostly because we use them more. Um, seventy, sixty to seventy percent of our calls are ambulance calls, so they go out more often than the other trucks. Um, so I think that, that will probably, that's a, a general idea plan we're going off of right now.
Okay, no, that makes sense. I'm familiar with the, with those uh six-liter Fords, so I know exactly what. Problems and stuff you're looking at, and I understand completely. So, okay, no, I was just curious what the, you know, what the. Next important or next big thing was gonna be, that's all. Cool.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, that's all helpful. Thank you both.
Was there another area of the budget we had questions, thoughts, or amendments on?
Yes, can we uh? Can we go to the, let me pull up my tab here. The Health, Rec, and Social Services budget, please?
I'm getting quicker.
And we are on page, what is that, twenty-four, I think?
Three.
Twenty-three. Okay, thank you, Mary. So I just wanted.
Page, so we'll scroll down as we go, just so we can keep folks kind of focused.
Okay, now I'm gonna go to your version of that. All right. Um, so. I, I think we addressed this last time when, when one of us raised it, it might have been Bron when. Are we having some overlap or duplication of services between, let's just start with. Um, the Bath Area Seniors Center and Spectrum. And if we are. Okay, so that's my question. Um, it does seem that there could be some overlap there. Does anybody wanna comment on that based on what we've received from them for funding requests?
Well, I don't have any, any comment other, other than, um, they are two separate entities.
Right.
Both serving seniors.
Right.
But other than that, I don't know about any overlap.
Is that something the FAC looked into, Lisa? Any areas of overlap?
Okay.
No, um, I don't, no, not specifically what each organization does. We typically address whether or not they have asked us for funds before and. Then consider whether or not we wanna continue to fund them.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, my understanding of it is that there may be some overlap there, and I just, um. You know, when we're looking at, for instance, potentially increasing the food bank amount. Um, as we discussed last time, or uh, when we look at the amount of Georgetown residents who access. The food bank, that was fairly high, and it would be helpful if. We had all of these organizations giving us some data points for how many, um. You know, how many residents are accessing them? Uh, so, uh. Obviously.
I make a couple of comments.
Sure.
Well, I'd like Mary, as Director of General Assistance, to ta- flag for us. The organizations to which we refer people, because we use the services of some of these organizations. Um, in helping people who come to the office for general assistance. So Mary, could you just tell us which of these organizations we regularly refer people to?
We regularly refer people to the Bath Area Food Bank. We also refer them down to the community center, but the Bath Area Food Bank. Is just um significantly larger, uh, offers a significantly wide variety. Um, that the community center doesn't offer. Right now, the community center will offer um gift cards and uh dried stapled goods. Um, unlike the Bath Area Food Bank, which will provide them with meat, dairy, all of that. So we send a lot of people. Um, I can't say I send them there, I suggest it, uh, strongly suggest that they, they, they visit the food bank. Um, the other one that um unfortunately did not come in for funding this year is the Midcoast Main Community Action. That is the group that is up at the Wing Farm Parkway. Um, they often will help folks uh fill out their lie-heap applications. They will help folks with budgeting, so they offer, and and they know about, they have folks that work directly with. You know, Central Main Power and directly with various um organizations, so they have a lot more of a wide variety. And a wide knowledge base of what's out there for, for individuals. So I was quite disappointed not to see anybody. On that, you know, any, any request from them. And the other one, really, the, the biggest other one is Tedford. We have sent a couple of people out there just to see if they can, you know, have any. If they can offer them any services. We don't have a lot of folks that um require shelter. The only time we've really had shelter issues is when we also have a domestic uh situation.
Right, right.
We haven't really utilized um Tedford Shelter um that much, however, they are the only local shelter. Um, and the other one was um Oasis Free Clinics, you know, just letting people know that, you know. You can go up there and and have your help, you know, your teeth taken care, you you know, stuff like that. Um, so the, so the big one is the Bath Area Food Bank. And Midcoast Main Community Action, honestly.
Yeah, that makes sense. And Midcoast Main Community Action also does parenting courses, which could be, yeah, which could, you know, they are really comprehensive. And I agree with you there, Mary.
Yeah, they definitely focus and a bunch of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, it's disappointing that, you know, maybe they have some transitions there on staff and they just didn't get it together. Um, you know.
Happy to, I'd be happy to move that we make a contribution in any case. Um, and I also think that from the letter that Spectrum Generation sent, um. They told us specifically that they serviced thirteen Georgetown residents and provided counseling to fifteen. And if you.
Right.
If you divide four hundred and ninety-six by twenty-eight, it's a, uh, you know, seventeen bucks. A session, so I think they're probably asking for less money than they need.
Yes, yes.
My feeling is that the Bath Area Senior Center, while certainly a valuable resource. Does overlap significantly with resources offered here in town at the community center. And that the food bank is in a crisis situation. As more and more people um need help and. Federal money is cut to those programs. So my recommendation would be to reduce. The uh senior citizens' contribution and increase the food bank. I'd like to see the food bank come up to a thousand dollars. Um, I'd like to see, give some money to Tedford, perhaps not the four thousand. But at the same time, it is the only shelter resource in our area community. And I think we should fund the Community Action Center, for whatever reason they didn't request funds. Um, I'd also like to. Just put in a good word for main public. Um, they did not mention it in their letter to us. But they're like, that, the backbone of the state's emergency alert system. Um, deliver warnings and alerts, brought, they have broadcast into cellphones. And they cover the entire state, so it's a single resource. Um, media resource that reaches all corners of the state. Um, and they also spend time on main news. Um, and provide free educational programs. I think it is a, a bargain at a hundred bucks. And we should fund it. Those are my thoughts. Now, that's not in the form of a motion. If you'd like specific amounts in a motion, I'll try to work it out, um, or we can, we can go line by line, I guess.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's ma- let's work it out, but let's hear from John first. I'm, I'm following along and I agree with you. I think we can tweak some of the amounts. I'm concerned about duplicative uh services here, particularly between the Bath Area Seniors Center. I am in total agreement about the food bank. Um, you know, some of us, you know, many of us, I think, are referring families to the food bank. Um, and to Midcoast Main Community Action. Um, you know, as much as I think we could. A- and, you know, as much as I believe in the mission of the Big Brother, Big Sister, we're serving, I think, one to two fans there. I know they asked for the amount they asked, but we could bring that down just a little bit and throw some money at Tedford and um. And some of these other places that we know our residents are, are accessing.
I mean, the only thing, if they didn't ask for the money, that's, that's, I don't, you know, that, that. Though I, that, that would be the reason, only reason I wouldn't wanna send anything that way, just because they didn't ask for it, I guess. That'd be my biggest.
The one thing that I would add is that I know particularly with Tedford, they got a letter in at the very end. There's been a lot of transition in these nonprofits. Folks don't realize that they had to put in some of these requests. So I know next year in the budget process, just for what it's worth, we will have a spot on the website where. Folks know if you are an organization seeking, you need to do X, Y, and Z, because I don't think that was really articulated. To some of the folks, because frankly, the guy at Tedford said, I would have had you a letter three months ago if I'd known.
Right. Well, but I think it's the first community action that we were talking about specifically is not having asked.
Right.
And, yeah, for whatever those reasons may be, it's an agency that we rely on.
Right.
And so I, I feel like we should. Fund it. Um.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make a motion that we reduce the, again, I very much believe in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. But we're looking at one to two uh families served by that, and I would like to reduce that by two hundred. You know, um, and, oh, and this could be amended, but at the very minimum, two hundred on that. And instead, fund Midcoast Main Community Action, understanding, as Tyler so aptly said. There's a lot of transition in nonprofits right. Understanding, as Tyler so aptly said, there's a lot of transition in nonprofits right now, and they could have just had a misstep, and I don't want that to count against, since they are an organization we rely on.
So, how much-
In terms of, in terms of the minutes, just for the sake of your administrator, well, I like the idea of going from one line and putting it to the other, could we just go line by line where we think things should be? Because I think that'll make it a little bit easier for the note-taking.
Oh, Tyler, you're making too much sense, but yes, of course.
Can I make a motion? I move that we reduce Senior Citizens Activity Center uh, to five hundred dollars and increase the Bath Area Food Bank to one thousand.
Second.
Okay, that's done. So your net effect there is zero?
Yeah.
All those in favor, though, right?
Do that, just get those two first?
Yeah, and food banks up to a thousand, and that was Bronwyn moved, and then Aria seconded?
Yep.
Okay, um, all in favor? I'll go for that.
Three to O.
Alright, Bath Area YMCA came in this year. I believe it was a little bit late. I think it was late, which was why it didn't get the FAC recommendation, only because it came in late. Um, for the first time with a four hundred dollar request, and tha- and mind you, it says new. We used to fund the YMCA in the mid-two thousands, but it has been years since they have requested funding.
Well, I know they're expanding, but, but their services are not free. And-
Agreed.
I mean, there's quite a, a membership fee.
Right.
We were, if they were inviting us to buy day passes or something that Georgetown residents could use, I-
Right.
I would be more interested in funding them.
Yep.
I don't feel like giving them fo- four hundred dollars when we don't have any indication that it would specifically benefit Georgetown people.
Okay.
That's just my personal.
Okay, what about eliminating that line and putting it in Midcoast Main Community Action?
Yes.
Aria's, Aria's put two hundred dollars to that line right now. If you put four hundred to it, we're at six hundred.
Okay, so my motion would be that we do not fund the Y. We fund Big Brother, Big Sister at two fifty.
Yep.
And we fund Main Midcoast Community Action at six hundred.
Yep.
Second.
Okay.
Hi.
And that bumps us up, we're moving up a little bit right there. I'm just curious, the, from what we were originally, so, um, yeah.
You can continue to tweak.
No, no, I'm, I'm just thinking in my head.
It depends on whether you read the, the request line or the FAC recommendation. Yes, that does bump it up from the-
Okay, we've had the motion. Um, uh, all those in favor?
And that is unanimous.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay, so that leaves Main Public for a hundred dollars, which Bronwyn feels pretty strongly should be, should be remain in our budget. How do the rest of you feel about that? Good?
Were they not forwarded because they didn't get on here in time, or?
Main Public is, is one that, um, what am I trying to say? It's just a big organization, and I, I know exactly where Bronwyn's coming from, and I, I'm a huge supporter of Main Public. But it's not one we've ever funded before, and the FAC pretty much has said, we don't, we're not funding anything we haven't fun- we're not adding anything more, you know? So that's why they didn't request it, or, I'm sorry, that they didn't recommend it, um. Not that it's not a great organization-
I'm suggesting it, I'm suggesting it partly because I understand that they're under a lot of pressure at the moment, that a lot of their, um, previously secure funding as a national public media service is, uh, under serious threat at the central government.
Right.
And in that they provide a service to main citizens specifically, it seemed to me like a hundred dollars was a somewhat of a symbolic investment, but also, uh, useful. And if we're concerned about holding the bottom line, I wonder, like, this is a digression, but I think that for the next cycle, we should develop a rather basic application for money. And one of the questions, we should ask them specifically, how you serve Georgetown residents? And how many? Because the places that we feel good about are the places that have told us that. Um, and the, and the place-
Exactly.
Like the Oasis Free Clinics. I understand it's a free clinic, but how many Georgetown residents have actually used it, have benefited from it? So I just wonder about five hundred dollars, how about four hundred dollars and give a hundred of that to the Main Public?
I second that.
Uh, you're talking about an additional hundred, or leaving the hundred alone?
No, leave the hundred alone, but reduce Oasis's clinics from five to four.
Okay.
It's pretty arbitrary, but-
Well, I mean, to, to your point of, you know, one of the, one of the more important things, especially as we build our cell tower, is that, uh, the emergency alert system. And to the extent that Main Public does reach, you know, basically from top to bottom of the state, that is important for Mainers, so, but, uh, the emergency alert backup and notifications is important. And I agree with you that a hundred dollars, um, can be removed from one line and put there.
Yeah, so we're saying a hundred to fund Main Public-
Yeah.
And reducing Oasis Free Clinics by a hundred, making that four hundred.
Correct.
And that was moved by Bronwyn and seconded by Aria?
That's correct.
Okay, um, all in favor? Well, good for that. I'm seeing John, alright, that is a three to zero.
Could we possibly round up Spectrum Generations to five hundred dollars?
Is that a motion, Bronwyn?
Four ninety-six.
Well, we, or we could reduce it to four hundred dollars.
Well, that, I don't know. Um, but, they're the one, one of the peo- one of the, uh, folks who told us how many Georgetown residents they served.
Right, right. No, I have no problem with that, I'm, I'm teasing.
So that's, that's a motion, Bronwyn?
Well, yeah, it is.
It's four dollars.
I think it's kind of still have six dollars hanging around there.
Right.
And it's seconded by who? John?
I'll, I'll second it, yeah.
So we're moving Spectrum up to five hundred, or that's the proposed motion?
Yeah.
Alright, um, I'm in favor.
And that is, uh, Bronwyn, a unanimous.
So where does that leave us, Tyler?
Well, we have touched base on the Senior Activity Center, the Food Bank, the Y.
Tedford.
Ted, uh, we have not touched base on Respite, but that wasn't anything in there. Big Brother, Big Sister, we've tackled, same with Lifelight. Public, we're in on the cap. Did we do anything with New Hope Midcoast?
No, they didn't request any funding.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that no one wanted to add that in. Oasis is down to four hundred.
Yeah.
People Plus is at zero.
Yeah.
Spectrum is at five hundred.
Yep.
And we now have Sweetser and Tedford is the last two.
Who's correct? Um, what's the situation on Sweetser? Didn't request.
Sweetser didn't send in a request. We never got one. We know that there are individuals in town that use Sweetser, we know that. We don't know how many, but we know that.
And, and they may be able to access that from Medicaid, you know, because that is one way to access Sweetser services. But I am curious why we didn't receive a funding request, and it's just hard to know these days.
It is, and, you know, um, Sweetser's a tough one, you know? Um, it also has, you know, a lot of turnover, I'm sure. But I don't know if you've seen all the ads, but Sweetser's on the television a lot. And you know damn well that those ads cost you some money, so.
What are they, what, are they advertising their services, or requesting?
They are advertising their services, they're advertising, um, taking away the stigma that's related to mental health issues, you know? Um, and they, I think, opened a new spot in Lewiston, uh, so yeah, they've been in the news quite a bit.
I guess my, my, I'd like to focus any additional funds, and I was not, you know, I was open to reducing Spectrum four hundred and giving, because we're not funding New Hope, and because Tedford is our only area shelter, you know, if we have somebody that becomes estranged from their family and needs a place to live, we have a man or a woman who's the, um, victim of domestic violence, um, you know, and cannot live in their home in Georgetown. Um, I just, that is, that is in my mind about, um, you know, what resources they have, since, since we did not receive a request from New Hope and-
Right.
Tedford, you know, i- is trying to build a relationship with us, and we do refer folks to them because we have nowhere else to refer them to.
So my question to Tyler was, where do we stand? What is the total of what we have allocated so far?
Our finance director is with a calculator in hand right now. I went to Mount Air Red, I'm gonna trust her Morse math.
We're, we're at forty, right now, if we include Tedford Shelter, we're at forty-three fifty.
If we include Tedford at a thousand, or Tedford at a-
At a thousand. We're at forty-three fifty.
Well, I-
So without Tedford, we're at thirty-three fifty.
Correct. Without Tedford, we're at thirty-three fifty.
I mean, wh- why don't we do five hundred? Is that what you said, Bronwyn?
Yes, that's what I said.
I second that.
And what, and what is your thought, Bronwyn? Is your thought to, to take five hundred from Tedford and give Bath Area Food Bank fifteen?
No, just to-
No, you wanna leave it at the thousand?
No, just re- uh, my only motion at the moment would be to reduce Tedford to five hundred.
Okay.
Or rather, fund it at five hundred, because the FAC recommendation was zero.
Right, yeah.
And Aria seconded that, okay.
That's right.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure I was clear, that I knew what I was adding up here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tyler and Mary, for tracking us.
So we're still under?
Yeah, right now, we're at thirty-eight fifty.
I'm just, I'm just.
So, if we're at thirty-eight fifty, we're less than we were last year, but we are more than what the FAC recommended.
Yeah, but like I said, the FAC didn't recommend two of them because they were late, so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so it's been moved-
Also funded, funded at least one thing that, uh, one entity that didn't make a request.
Right, right.
So it was moved and seconded.
So, um, vote for all in favor. We're still less than we were last year, so I'll still go for it.
Three to O.
Okay, so I'll make those changes to those line items. Okay.
And coming back to the larger discussion, you know, uh, we can develop a form, pretty easy to do, for these folks to fill out. Yeah, thank you.
Application for Social Services, yep.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that, just while we're on that topic and we're here, there are some places like Tedford Shelter that will not be able to give us good data on the number of Georgetown residents, particularly because at times, the folks that they are helping, in many cases, won't give them data, so just for what that's-
I do know that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, but that's good for folks who are observing this meeting to understand, you know, we may have to go on anecdotal data versus hard data.
Right, right. Do you have anything else on this sheet that you want to make any corrections to? You've got Patent Free, GA, the Community Center, the Rec Committee, and Richards. Those are all pretty straightforward.
I'm, I'm happy with those.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any adjustments. I know they went through a process.
Yep, okay, perfect.
Was there another page in the budget we wanted to review?
I didn't have any, to my knowledge, so, just if you guys had something.
Nope, that was it for me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Bronwyn, did you want to do anything at all about the Fire Department's reserve funds?
No, I, I don't think so. I mean-
Okay.
Uh, I would like them to develop a goal.
Right, yep.
Rather than-
Understand.
Just trying to put as much money as possible in there.
Yep, agreed.
Because I think that reserve funds prove their worth with the, our experience with the town wharf in the recent- If we had not had that money, we would not have been able to fund the repairs that subsequently were reimbursed by FEMA.
Right.
Um, so, um, you know, I'm a big fan of it, but I do think that, that there needs to be a goal in mind. We don't just throw ten thousand dollars here and twenty thousand dollars there because we think we can afford it this year. We need to know that we are aiming for five hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay, good. And, and we've been, I, I know that Terry Taylor, um, is, has been working with Brian, um, and Brian's got a group together looking at a, you know, where we stand with vehicles, as well as capital equipment, so, um, I know that that's, that process is in the works, so.
Hadn't we started, you started like a capital improvement, whatever that-
Mm-hmm, a capital improvement plan, yeah.
Okay, that's, so, the, somewhere there, it has been, okay, no, I, I don't, I, there's enough, I realize there's a lot going on, but- that was something that we had at least talked about before, so.
Yeah, and for the Fire Department, that is pretty much their equipment and their vehicles.
Okay.
Like the transfer station, really, you've got a couple of things down there. You've got the compactor, you've got the, you know, the roof we just got taken care of, so you've got the compactor, but you've got the mall, and then you've got the little, you know? So there's a few different pieces, but for the Fire Department, it really is, well, I shouldn't say, I should say building vehicles and equipment.
Yep.
Yeah.
Given, given that we've now gone through and made amendments to the budget, I think if the board is getting ready, the motion that I hope we could get is to move the budget as amended to the public hearing. Though, we could definitely, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose that.
No, I was about to make that motion. So, unless anybody has anything more to add, and I don't think we do, then I would move to, um, proceed with the budget as amended to the public hearing next week.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody in favor?
I'm in favor. Alright, that is three to O, Aria and Bronwyn. And with that, John, we would offer a closing public comment, and then we can adjourn.
Is there any public comment? I don't see any, so entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll update this budget, I'll get it to Tyler on Thursday. I'm actually out of the office tomorrow, I've got a couple of appointments that need to be kept. Um, so I'll have this to Tyler, we'll get it to the website, and I'll send you, you folks a brand-new copy, so you have the to- you know, the ending, what we just ended with, so you can go ahead and can your other copies, okay?
Thank, thank you all, um, for, for your hard work on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have paper copies at the office come through today.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.